Right. Did everybody get to see the the email about the holiday celebration information from Mark?
Yes.
Yeah, I left a message today for the for the events person. I have, I don't know if you're familiar with downstairs at Galliford's, they have a function room that actually opens up out into the back of the, you know, the park. There's a couple of fire pits there. And my thought was, if we could find a suitable date, would be to do something with just apps for an hour, hour or so in a cash bar downstairs. And if anybody wants to stick around and go have dinner upstairs, you know, they could do that. But I just have to pick a suitable date. And they, they have, they have, you know, a winter celebration that's going on. And they said if we want to avoid the crowds, we'd want to do something on a Monday or Tuesday, unless we wanted to make that part of it. My thought with this, and I, I wanted, I was hoping I would be able to get dates for, you know, availability for the, for the month of December to see what would fit. So I'm assuming that she will call me back or get back to me. And then I guess we can take it up next week. I know that's December 6th. But if I get it, if I get information sooner, I'll email it to everybody. Okay. I don't know if anybody has any other thoughts about it, or if they think we should just nix it, or do you think that's a good idea?
It's a good idea. I mean, I think, well, even if it ends up being in January, it'd still be worth it. So like, if we can't manage to fit it in in December, like, still, you know, it could be like New Year's celebration.
Yeah, Christmas flash winters, winter says this.
Yeah, right. Exactly.
All right, that's even better. So we'll pick, we'll see if it's maybe it'll be.
There was an email mentioning that when Chief Kessler was sworn in, it overlapped with the holiday.
Yeah, well, I had, and by the way, we have to, as you recall, we appointed Jason Bagnon as a deputy chief, and he was to take over as chief when Chief Kessler retires. His, his retirement date is December 22nd. This, this is the contract we all need to sign it. He signed it today, dropped it off, because I asked him, you know, we've, we've been talking about it. And, but the date is, the official date would be December 22nd was when he would take over. And I actually asked Jason about that. And he said, you know, the, the chief, the chief Kessler really didn't want anything for himself, but essentially Deputy Chief Bang said, that's just tough. And they're gonna do something for him, you know, in March. But they were hoping that there would be something like this where they'd have the opportunity, and he thought it would be a great idea to put it all together. So whatever we pick for a date, you know, he thinks, he thinks he can convince him to.
Yeah, that sounds excellent.
Makes sense to me.
You know, so we can kind of get a two for out of it. So that's, um, so that's the holiday celebration. So I guess to be determined, I'll get get some details. I think, I, I would everybody agree that it's probably a good location, where we've done it here before, and if we can make it work.
Yeah. I'll say, nice lights.
Well, okay. Secondly, I'd like to flip flop this. I'd like to do the executive session first, and then come back out of it and talk about the workshop, unless you have a different thoughts about it.
I agree.
Yeah.
I move to enter into the executive session purpose two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions, or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Highway Superintendent.
Second.
All right, we'll call vote Morali, aye?
Goes aye.
Daughters aye. Cooter aye.
Chanel aye.
All right, so we will reconvene to go back into, into session to, uh, to continue with our discussing goals and objectives where we're going in executive session at this point.
Close the door in case someone comes in.
I'll do it.
So let's go back now into uh finished up the executive session. We'll go back into the workshop to discuss goals and objectives. First thing I would just um just as as it's appropriate to this that just as housekeeping since the last time that uh that we had this workshop, I reached out to DLS.
Okay.
If you recall that there was a discussion with members of the board of the the board of assessors chair that the recommendations were just a recommendation, not the recommendation. I got clarification from Zach Blake who offered to any assistance, additional assistance we needed that he had discussed this with both members of the Board of Assessors. And the recommendation in in the report is the recommendation and he said it's not political. It was um based on results and what needs to get done. And that he sticks to that recommendation that's exactly what he meant, not nothing else. Um. So that's kind of the read it digest condensed version of my.
They're good. He didn't mean anything by it other than what he meant.
Right, right. And it was it was his recommendation and he did what he did say was the reason for and he did say that men's in a unique position because we actually have two elected officials, two elected assessors who are competent and trained and certified. Most towns are not like that. Most towns have you know, people who are within the industry somehow like real estate agents something that run and then they hire somebody senses both of those gentlemen, both our principal assessors and other towns. And he also said that the issue right now is it's at a point where um you know, we hire contracts to go to do some of the work that the principal assessor would normally do. You know, and the reason that you want to do, he he would suggest. You know, and the reason that you want to do, he, he would suggest that you actually appoint assessors is you can, it's, you have a much bigger pool of people who are trained because you're not dealing with just town residents. You're getting people from the, from the great area or large, so. So the way that those were his comments to me. All right. Um, I don't know if you all had it. No, I had sent to a couple of you, maybe to everybody, the, the draft of the select board policies.
Yeah.
I had not looked at them.
I, yeah, I, I saw it.
You saw it, right?
The financial policies, she sent that to you?
No.
Oh.
No, this was, this was, um, actually, um, Jean Berthold, um, last year had given me a couple of documents that she had copies of. One of them is a draft of the Town of Minden Board of Selection operating procedures. And the, uh, the, the members of the select board at the time, this was in August of 2006, where Sharon Cutler, who is the chairwoman, uh, Bonnie Tenio and David Green.
Not sure I saw that one.
Yeah, and that was what, um, uh, I think, uh, Brendan, you and Jess, Jason had asked for it. So I, I know it's.
Yeah.
He scanned it for me once, the chief of police. And I had asked him and he couldn't find it. So I, I dug through a pile of stuff and.
And, and very much appreciated. Uh, so during the last meeting, we, we volunteered basically to, to start updating these and modernizing it. So I, I converted this from PDF to, cause it's a scan back to image, but I have to, I have to clean it up back to a word document. Um, and then we can use it as a, a basis, you know, to start creating a more updated one.
Now the, the next thing, I don't know if this is, um.
Yeah.
Back in November of 2001, um, uh, their company, um, named Systems Consulting Group, um, did a staffing and utilization study of the town. Again, it's 22 years old. This is another one that I have. I'll be glad to hand this to you two gentlemen, if you want it.
Uh, sure. I could.
Yes.
Scan that. It'll work.
Okay.
Guys, you have a good day.
Good.
Yeah.
All right. The next, the next thing I think would be appropriate for us, I think we should tackle, which is a more, uh.
Well, do you do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well. There were, there were basically two documents, I think. One of them was the financial policy. We'll talk about that. And then the other one is autonomy and personnel policies.
Yes.
Now, was that sent to all of us or just?
Those were sent to everybody, I believe.
Yeah. So the way this was explained to me, um, when I was discussing it with the HR. He find that email.
These sick leave policies?
Yes, you didn't find that the current sick leave policy listed in our personnel policy along with the proposed changes from 2019 that we never find. So.
Yeah, there's one that's publicly linked on our website, which is the published copy. That's quite a.
Right. You can see, you can see this one, uh, 6.1.7 and 6.2 that was the, would exist currently. And then the, um, and then the, the new policy. I don't know if you had this, had a chance to look at it, but, um, it had suggested, uh, you know, accrual, it changed it, took out, uh, full-time employees. And then it said part-time employee, get rid of that and changed it to full-time employees that were 20 hours or more per week. So that was one of the, one of the changes. Then they had approval of sick leave for full-time employees. Um, it was changed to a maximum of 95 days. It was 105. So that was to be reduced by 10 days. Uh, but it was grandfather for those who already had the 105, uh, extended sick leave. Long-term disability policy.
But the, the fire, the highway and the town hall policies aren't unified, right? Like I, they seemed all be different.
Well, the issue, the issue is that they all, that they all, um, the issue is that they all referred to, I believe, the, the, the contracts referred to the personnel policy.
Okay.
And then these, this was supposed to be established, um, and it was never.
But some of the, the changes were incorporated into the actual what departing agreements.
I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah, I think fire is the one that's out of sync with the 105 versus 80 or something like that.
Okay, it could be. But I wanted to, but again, it's, these are policies, one, one, and what I wanted to bring up was ask to just get, get the okay to have labor council, to have the, have the, uh, HR person reach out to labor council and get this all synced up.
Yeah.
And then come back to us.
Yeah. Bring that in CBA in the cycle.
Right. So, yeah.
Exactly. Yeah, it, it's just good practice. We don't want to have different ingredients all over the place.
No. Well, and, and actually what brought, what brought this up was, you know, there's a software program that they use to accrue all of this. And there were different numbers in different places and.
Yeah.
And there were some people that, and then there were some people that it, it didn't stop, you know, cause you can program it to stop at 95 days. And then initially I was told, well, it's, you know, it's, no, it's, it's not stopping in 95 days. And then turned out it was stopping in 95 days for some people and not for others. So the first thing was that, you know, I said, well, if they grandfather, we, it, let's stop it. I mean, let's fix it now, right? And adjust that to, to what it says in writing. So at least that part's been done. But to me, if they were, if there was a proposal four years ago, you know, we need to follow through in that proposal. So I just, so as far as a personnel policy, I just want to give HR permission to reach out to labor council or town council.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
So just thinking, y- yes. And I was also thinking about, you'd brought up old business on the agenda. I think I mentioned it as well, kind of, you know. Well, that, yeah, my specific, what I specifically said is that the way that board of health is handling old business is that they're, they're at least not, they're not being general about it. They, they stay.
Thanks.
It's like a parking lot.
Yeah.
Right? Like.
Exactly.
Last, I'm wondering is, do we, some of these things, I mean, that, there's probably four or five things in there that we're all focused on now, I think.
Yeah.
I wonder if we actually put those as old business so we get.
In the agenda. Yeah. No, I, I agree. And, and council told me, you know, it's okay to use, you know, old business.
Yeah.
As long as it's specific items.
Right.
You don't, and, and what she said, you don't have to call it old business.
Right.
I mean, you can, but it, it's important to be specific. That's what it was. Just a general old business and just.
Right. That, and I, that's why I think that the health format would like, that called out to me and it also was a, like a, a prompter for the end of the meeting.
So you don't forget about.
Cause you know.
Yeah.
By the time we get to the end of the meeting.
Right. Just, yeah, it's kind of goes through it like a checklist.
Yeah, like a checklist. Exactly. I think it also highlights the bigger things we're focused on as.
Yeah.
General public. Yeah, transparency, right?
Yeah.
Then can be exciting when we get to take things off the list. Cause we've actually finished.
Yeah, right. I, I love the dopamine hit of crossing a checklist.
Rooster.
Rooster.
Now, this, again, this issue of, of the, uh, financial policies, this document that I sent to you was one that, um, was provided, um, the, the previous, um, treasurer collector had been concerned because there were a couple of management letters. If you remember when I was, we were talking at the meeting last week about the audit. Um, the, I'm told that the management letter for multiple years criticizes for not having official policies and procedures.
Yeah.
And it was actually impetus to start the whole DLS study. And in the meantime, um, they had gotten some boilerplate information from, uh, DLS and also our, our town accountant, Kinshoff Associates. And this document was marked up, um, by the town administrator. Dave Currie, I know you're muted. Are you, are you listening in? Chief? Well, the only reason I asked is because I, I believe that at some point he had boozed us too. And had made some, some comments in here. I don't know which ones, but this is marked up. And the next step I was going to do was I was going to ask the, uh, ask if, if the board felt it was appropriate for me to give this to the finance director and ever to come back with us with, you know, some kind of recommendation. Because what happened is prior to the, uh, DLS coming in, the town administrator had wanted to put policies in place. And I said, well, no, you know, these policies were not put in place because she had told me when I was a FinCom chair that the select board at the time was not prepared to put policies in place. And I didn't understand, why would you not want policies in place? I mean, things like, you know, when you go for reimbursement, you have to submit it within 30 day, 30 days and, you know, to specify, you know, daily limits. I, I mean, all kinds of just good housekeeping, good, good practices. Uh, but, you know, I wasn't on the board then, but I am now and I'd like to get this in place. And what I'd like to do is, is to give it to a finance director. Ask her to, not to start from zero, but start here.
Yeah.
Seems like a good idea to me.
You know, ask her to, give her a month to come back to us.
It lines up with the other things we've already been asking.
Yeah.
Which is giving, giving them, you know, access to be the experts in the field and provide us their info.
Yeah. And also.
Trusting in professional confidence.
She's going to be the one that's going to be in a sense enforcing it. You know, cause they're going to be looking at her and the, and, and again, this was, this was our, um, you know, I was told that, that, that Eric, our accountant would also assist with this. So.
Sure. Should we all just also take a look and, and give any feedback that we have on this copy directly to her?
If, you know, my, I mean, there's two options. The first one is to look at it now. The second one is for me to give her this.
And we'll look at it when it comes back.
Look at it after she, but.
Yeah, clearly a, a few people put some input on here right of now. Yeah. There's a lot of nose.
Yeah, I know. Cause some of them are like, they're not, um, substantiated. They're, you know, they're just like.
Yeah. I get it.
Well, I do, I recall that at one point there was, there was an issue. There were some, there are, there are some purchasing practices where, um, some things have to be done by a credit card and they couldn't get itemized bills. Um, but, and, and I dealt with some of that in my professional career. And what would happen is you would go to municipalities, you know, municipalities, they still need invoices. And they still, you know, they still have to have that, you know, for transparency reasons. And a lot of companies tell you no, until you tell them, well, then we won't buy anything. And then they say, oh, now I understand. And they figure out a way to do it. So, so I'm going to give that to her.
We come back to, um, the date. Cause I was just thinking, thing like capital plan. There's a few things we're probably going to be pushing Jody's way. And the fledge of process should be, should be kicking off very soon.
Yeah.
Maybe give her a chance to get a sit through the asks and, and we can give her a recommended, like I think a month makes sense on that. But I don't see your center's going to be financing at least of that. Just scenarios going to be coming her way potentially. Let's give her, let's give it flexibility to kind of give us dates based on what she knows she has in her place within three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Well, I'm, I was going to give it to her. You know, she can come back.
Monday. Sorry.
Oh, you'll get an answer.
Suggest the deadlines.
Yeah, right.
Right.
Okay, I am, uh, I don't, I know we, we want to pick up next. Um, let's, let's see, we've got other, oh, I, I suppose I can bring up, um, just a, a couple of other issues, um, while we're talking about, about policies and, you know, forward, forward-looking, um, water and sewer. We had a meeting today. Um, and it turns out, you know, the, the last time we spoke, there were, um, four sites, two public, two private. Interestingly enough, there's one, there's one site, which is a public site, which is all the way down Providence Road. Um, almost to the Blackstone line. Okay. There's, there's a little pond on the, on the right called Slade's Pond. Right after that, there's a curve in the roadway. And, and about 15 or 20 years ago, Milford Water Company did borings on one side of the river that there that goes down neck adjacent to Colonial Drive. And said, oh, it's, no, it didn't pan out. There's no water. It's nothing else. These guys did it on the other side because we have an easement and you look at it, we have town, you know, town owned, um, conservation land. And the conservation restriction on it specifically calls out a right of way and specifically says an acceptable use is for public water supply. Turns out that it's fantastic. The, um, the material is ideal. You know, they did a short term, um, they did a short-term study. It's short-term, you know, um, water capacity.
Yeah.
It came back spectacular. Um, and, and, you know, we have a grant that I actually signed today, an application for a $285,000 grant to do the, the third level of it. And again, this is just to investigate. It's not to, to make any decisions. Then the other piece, they're still talking with Hope Dale about, uh, their issues. And initially they thought there was a problem, um, with their, um, you know, with, with leakage in the system and not having the capacity. That's, that's, that's not the issue.
That's not the case. Okay.
No, apparently it's something to do with, with, you know, how, how, um, the, the quality of the processed, um, liquid is. And that they do have capacity.
Interesting. This came up in our meeting last night.
Oh, okay.
Same center.
And, and two things that they had, they had suggested that we do is to put, and again, along with policy and procedure is we need to put a, uh, town bylaw in place about, uh, protecting the watershed. And then there was a second piece to it. Um, oh, and, and in addition to that, there needs to be some zoning work done. Um, about some zoning laws in a, um, in, in that respect. And I asked Vinnie at the, I asked the water board if they would run with that and come back to this board to put something on the warrant and, and, and also reach out to, to zoning for them to do their piece of it. And then, um, to continue to march. And then as far as the two, there were two private sites. And depending on how these public sites panned out, we were going to talk to these owners. We're not going to go to those two private sites because we found a good one that could potentially do this. That, that could suit if, if we need to do this, because clearly if we do, um, water and sewer, which would, or if we do sewer, which would be, um, essentially Route 16 and 140. And then part of it, based on all of it, would be the town hall campus. And also around Lake Nitmuck. Because of, because the tight tanks.
Right.
You know, to include the water quality, um, there is, um, you know, we would have to provide a, a water supply as well. And there are still, and you know, Hope Dale is still, um, they still don't have enough water because one of the wells is down. And they're still look potentially looking. So, that was some pretty positive feedback that we got today. And there's actually, you know, we've applied for, for monies to continue to, to do the study. But this is the first time they've done it two or three times before. This is the first time that we actually picked a place that actually worked.
Yeah.
Worked, you know?
He said it couldn't be done.
Well, it's, it's, it's good.
Great.
Um, yeah. Um, and I, I think it was an email that, that I think, did you see the building inspector sent it to everybody?
I didn't see it. I didn't see any emails from the building.
Hang on. Hang on.
It's a capital plan going. What's interestingly, everybody saw the Jody's update on. What's interesting, like, everybody saw the Jody's update on sort of what the entry, you know, process.
Yeah, the process.
That is. Um, and David updated us saying that he had a, uh, department in eating, eating back in like October. So my email's the eighth. Um, to bring it up, what I haven't seen is any collection, so.
Inventory.
Yeah, I think they would have started that way. But I mean, I think that's really the thing.
Okay.
I wonder about you, but even if you want that you've gotten about at some point, it was just roll the super budget process.
I, I thought that was her plan, but I don't, was it like in a later phase? I don't think that was in the initial phase, but I, I thought that was.
Right, but I, I think what we need, what I would say is we need to get a preliminary needs, capital needs list together, whether it's, and I, I talked to David about it. I'll talk to him again to say, listen, if you get a list, I'll fill up the forms, I'll put in spreadsheet, I don't care. But I just think we just need that baseline. So things like the senior center, library, trash, things we can ourselves.
You should email David and Jody then after and just see like where they are then.
Yeah, because I, I got the impression that it wasn't, that it was planned for relatively shortly.
Yeah, I felt like snakes would have that. I, I kind of, David's not here to defend us.
Yeah. I mean, it's more, it's more of a follow ups. I think eat, and in, uh, capital needs, just a list, it's, to me, the next thing that needs to happen, things process wise in terms of forms and, you know, in perpetuity, we can bring that in as we go. Cause I mean, John, I know John's saying, oh, I can't wait. He's, he's got a list and speaks of these things he needs.
He's going to put the hot box on for next week. His hut, his hut box is, and I remember it, it may be, I, I don't think it was that long ago, but, but I remember when, when we bought a hot box, which I don't know if you know what that is.
Thank you for road.
Yeah, to, to fill in puddles so that he actually used, you know, hot.
Yeah.
Hot asphalt to fill the puddles. But, you know, it's, it's worn out. He needs another one. And I, I thought we bought one. I thought it was.
I remember one at town meeting at some point, but I don't remember what.
I thought it was five or six years.
Yeah.
We don't have any bottles, so. It'll be awesome.
Well, actually, that hill road right now doesn't have any puddles. It's amazing.
So that's what I think to, to, to that, that's the actual, are we going to get the baseline? Yes, so we can get away from.
Yes.
I hear.
Yeah. And the other thing is it's manageable. One of the things I wanted to, to bring up when we, we were actually preparing the, um, uh, for the special town meeting, we were there with, with FinCom, we were talking about software and, you know, should we really be using, you know, is there more we can do with the software? Uh, you know, John Dudley had spoken to me about, you know, that one of the companies or two of the companies he talked to had, you know, they had a lot more scope than that. And I said to him, and I told him at the time, I said, just stick to, you know, a narrow focus, what you're doing right now, and we'll discuss more of it later. But I, you know, I would, I would really, I really think it would be a good idea for us to to, to look at all of the areas that these, that the software.
Sure. And you talked about with the work order system, right?
Right, exactly. But it is just like, for instance, he's, he's talking about, you know, equipment and the age of equipment. You know, and now he's got this, this company that did the, the road study, but I think there's a lot of other facilities type things, not just the highway that we really need to.
Yeah.
Because I, I think there's just, it's too much for something to get your hands on. We need to know what it all is.
Exactly. Yeah, asset management's huge. So the capital plan piece, I see a lot of pieces in place to manage it. So now we need the content.
Yeah, right.
Start the process. And I would assume we'll talk about it, but I think FinCom reaching out, offering us mineral solution, I'd say between our board and FinCom. We can, we would need to probably assess bigger of that, what starts to look like in terms of priorities.
I want to see from the town clerk if we, if we've gotten any interest from anybody.
Right.
Because she posted it this.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I've all judged.
Because I will, I will say, I did, I did specifically reach out to Monty Tineo. Because I, I said to him, I thought he would be a good choice because, you know, he knows, he'd been around. I mean, he's listed on this, this thing from two thousand and six, right? I think he's got a good, it'd be a really, uh, good handle on that for him. You know?
And I think the, the, the other aspect that you say we don't have money to support capital. That's actually incorrect. I mean, there's, there's a decent, and that's one of the things Jody's pulling together is it's in different places, she's consolidating it, but he asked me, probably in the neighborhood of six hundred thousand available capital projects. Not including our. Not including our.
Right.
Yeah.
So I mean, make a dent, a lot of things with that.
Yeah, you can.
And I, I think, I mean, you also, you know, and again, I don't.
This thing that you just sent over to us, because.
What's that?
Like this thing that you just sent over to us. I didn't, I didn't know that the, uh, building inspector was going to come back and say that most of that building could be used.
Oh.
Initially, yeah. Well, the, the garage, the separate garage.
Yeah, that's the rectory.
Is. Right, that's.
Well, there's a separate garage that's different from the rectory, so.
Right. What, if you look at the, if you look at the library.
It's attached to the right.
There's a detached garage.
But there's another garage in the back corner. That, that was actually, it was actually ready to come down about thirty years ago.
Yeah. I didn't like blotting tape on it and. Okay.
Yeah.
So, and that's the one that needs to get brought down.
I think the other thing too, that's part of the capital is it's going to, it's not just assets. Well, add, it is assets, it's going to also include land parcels. And set, and without new buildings, so handled.
Yeah.
Um, which will also help towards facilities management, I understand. Okay. What facilities do we have to actually manage? You know, so, but this is actually on that list that Jean gave me and came from the trustees as well. Doing some of the rectory.
Oh, good, good. Okay.
Well, I mean, I see it there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, yes. We haven't filled out the form yet. It doesn't, it doesn't.
Right, so this is where kind of.
We don't know yet.
We might have to do it with like, if I was Mike and Mandalay, I'd say pen and paper.
Right, well, it might.
Well, they have the form because I met with them on, um, Monday, I believe. Uh, uh, teams and we talked all this through and I saw the form. So I mean, like, I know it exists. But I just, I thought they had sent it out. We talked about other technologies.
Yeah, maybe they're still just.
Maybe they're just waiting for, after the holiday.
I know, like.
Well, it will be available. They'll have to share the form with us and then it would be available immediately. Like, it's just, it is stored in the forms area and then we can export it to Excel. But in the form, it makes nice, pretty graphs and stuff. Um, so I'll, I'll just show you one, um. So the working group for IT policies, I used a form to, um, collect, you know, when people could be. And so this is only a one question form in here. I'll, I'll show you that one. Um. All right, so this is forms and, um, there's this what time, right? So you see how it says responses up here. So when you share a form with us and it makes nice, pretty graphs, right? But also you can open all those, and there's only five responses in here, but you can open this in Excel. Um, and so anybody that has, uh, anybody that has access to that will see this. Well, so I didn't make it, so I can't give you access, but David and Jody have made it, so they can access. Yeah.
So that's how we get access against David.
Right, that's why I said you should email them and say, where are you at? But it's all stored in there. Accessible once they share it or they can export it. You can see this as well as like Excel. It just collects people's emails and their names and, you know, puts in, I, you know, all the values for what days they prefer to come in.
They have put together things.
Right. So it's. Yeah, they didn't, they didn't provide, they didn't shepherd it. Other than on the screen. Um, also out there.
Yeah. Road study, seven twentieth.
Yeah, what's the name of that company? Kind of names. Actually, I can't remember. Um, and that what, what are we, other than being informational, what are we getting out of?
Beta group.
Beta, right, catchy name. I knew it was catchy name.
Well, I think we're going to be, we should be putting that, I mean, that actually should roll into the capital plan. We should start planning. And that, for me, what I would like to discuss is actually jump starting by using our funds to, most of that stuff's going to be contracted out anyway. So if we get in front of it, we kind of understand. It'll need to be prioritized because you're going to have at least three or four different levels of repair. And we can spend all of our money on roads that are, have to be completely reconstructed. Or we need to be more strategic to say.
Well, we've done, and we have previous in the past on crack sealing and, and things. And by the way, it's beta. His name of the company. I just, implementation, pavement management strategies. Beta pavement manager.
And will the general like cost of the category of repair be included in this?
What I'm told. I mean, the idea was to, the idea was that they, they, they went through the study rated all the roads and then would give us numbers. So it was a cost of what priorities were and that. You know.
They may not prioritize. They're probably just going to group it in terms of the types of. It'll be up to us to.
Like I said, what I mean.
Yeah, and I think they're also, it, it was all done via video. So they'll come back and redo it if we need to, but this is going to be information that's actually accessible online to understand and go out and look at roads and stuff.
Yeah.
This is pretty cool software.
It's awesome.
But to your point, Jason, now that, that should be something we should put an action plan around that.
Well, like if that's like, you know, got this giant chunk of money that, you know, we're going to spend that short term capital and then roads are often a priority to most people. So if that's, seems like a nice hot backlog, maybe.
Well, the, the reason I mentioned ARPA is the dollar amounts you're going to see in that study are going to be high.
Large, yes.
So.
Right there.
Well, we have, well, there is, there's an online study that was done, was it fifteen years ago or ten?
Twenty fifth. You mean, there was a study like that done in twenty fifteen?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the numbers then were staggering.
Right.
And it has not. And, and no, make no mistake, there's been some roads that were redone since then.
Right.
You know, but it's, the number hasn't gone down.
Source like ARPA available to, to actually try to jumpstart it. Um, to get, to get to a point, which is chapter ninety won't cover it.
No.
And we're always, we'll be playing catch up. But be curious to see how do we ma- marry ARPA, maybe some of the CapEx stuff you're wanting along with chapter ninety over multiple years to get a jump, but also maintain, that's the other maintenance. We tend to fix it in that last time.
We do the maintenance? Are we supposed to be doing the maintenance?
On.
We'll do the cracks.
On the road, yeah.
Well, no, you, you.
Need to make changes.
You know, with, in, in my experience, the, the highway department did everything that they could do themselves, but there's a lot of it and it was a matter of, you know, expertise and equipment.
Right.
So they, we, we have to contract.
Like, we don't own an asphalt, like a full fledged asphalt layer, right?
No.
So like, so they. Or we can do patches.
Yeah, but we'll be prepared both by Elena, that's all contracted.
Right. Right. All right, so we're going to re- refer the what, what we've already talked about. I'm not sure what, how much more we can do tonight, but I'm open. In element, I, I, I prepared as much as I could, but um, there's a lot of moving parts here, look, waiting for other people to to come in. But I, I definitely, I think the, the financial piece is important. And, and the, the, you know, the, the sickly policies important to hand off to.
Do you agree with the DLS study too? Like the financial policies, capital plan and budget just needs to happen anyway. And that touches on a lot of what was in there. Only thing would be the, um, financial review meetings.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that's something we could try one at the end of the quarter. Big year, I'm going to be here.
That's the finance select board. Financial, you know.
Something that, something what we were looking at, something that we, we would hope to do it, you know, partway through the year, sit down and, and actually see where we're at financially. Because again, I always felt like we were this, at this crisis management. You know, and I, I want to be more proactive about it.
We used to do a quarterly, you know, people can have one raise, both on revenue meetings on Saturday. And, uh, we, the finance, well, we didn't have a finance director, you know, Jean, Claudia, and everyone in the financial areas would actually present, discuss, and we had department heads here too. So they can speak to their budget if they had issues.
Yeah, and the difference. But if I'm not mistaken, the plan was that the town administrator was going to take that rollover that they would come, you know, in a more informal session, setting and then come back and you know, and, and on, on, on a certain level, some of that happened and some of it didn't. You know. So. All right, is there anything, anything else that, um, we make note of for, for next time? I don't know if we want to pick another day to do another workshop. I, I really think we need to kind of be focused on the budget at this point.
Well, well, do we, do we leverage that, you know, the agenda, just to standing items and being given up?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right.
I agree. I think.
Okay.
Right, those are our top items, so.
Yeah.
Essentially the DLS study and, you know, things that are left. I do think like if something like that, I don't know if we're relying on the library to push us to do this, so bump in if I'm, I don't know what's going on. But like the roof, like saying that like we should have a rooper coming. It's like the, is that more immediate that we have to like bond right now or do we just?
You're saying a roof.
Repairing the roof on the rectory so we prevent old, you know, decay from costing more six months from now and like, are those more price to see management things that we relying on like the, the TAF library board to push us to that or is that something?
Well, we, well, you know, a, a few years ago, the, the conversation was, you know, there were three options, right? One of them was to, um, just tear down the rectory. One of them was to make something you know, to make a, a center and the third one was to make some kind of a, almost, I don't want to say a carport, but like an outside pavilion. Sure. You know, so.
So that, yeah, they have a, um, subcommittee, like the, the trustees have a subcommittee looking or not a, a working group looking at what to do with the rectory, but it's not, I guess, technically part of the library. So that's where it's, it's, there's a gray, yeah, because the, right, I guess the, the, the the water heater for the library is in the building. So like there's, there are assets that belong to the library that are in the rectory.
Okay.
So like.
Ultimately, execution's going to come to us.
Right.
I think the, the trustees each raised a possibility to cap the form of the capital planning and saying, this is going to be
Right.
Somebody like, I'd say John Erickson.
Right.
Examine it to say, now this, I understand why they think it's bad. It can, it can, we can live with this for a couple of years type of thing, but I think ultimately the.
There's plaster falling down.
I just did it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the other, and the other question is what, what's the purpose of that building going to be? What's the cost of keeping it versus just taking it down?
Right, well, I like, I, I like the idea of just keep diverting to the capital plan to ensure that it's even a sensible option and that it's chucked in with all the other decisions.
Yeah, so like, yeah.
Yeah, but there will be times where if John, if somebody were to come back and say, no, no.
It's urgent, yeah.
That urgent.
Yeah. Right.
Right, could jump on that crisis management path again.
Right.
And we manage.
Right, so I wish, I, in that specific case, I was wondering who decides that urgency. Um.
Yeah.
Because if it's somebody closer to the problem, that's much more helpful than.
So you're just sitting there like. Take and determine that. I mean, I can sit there and say.
Right.
Yes. Acting on an emergency pair of a town building that currently fallen to the, yeah, town administrators also some correct. But ultimately facilities management.
Exactly.
There, it should be.
Yeah, I'm talking, talking about this, talking myself right into the same thing we're talking about.
Yep.
What would happen if I signed the wrong?
We have to start over again. Is there anything else?
I think that's. I think that's, I think we got three to five, eighty topics to work through here.
Yeah, yeah, good. Okay, so let's just, let me just make sure that I'm. She took, I I gave my pen away.
It's coming back. You need a pen dish like us down here.
Yeah, right. Sir. Alright, so our, so our, our five things we're talking about is capital plan, right? And then. Financial policies and procedures, right? Sick leave. Got the select board policies and procedures as well.
It's like, ah, it's only five things, five giant things.
And and what you said, the fifth one you said was a five year.
The the red line.
Yeah, right.
Let's know it's, it's there and it's got questions, and they would send it out the second they wanted to, I just don't know when they.
One other, one other thing is I had followed up with with Worldband. Um, you know, the the outlets put in downstairs, so they're going to put the camera in. And they're also, we had talked about the difference of this TV, they said it was a little bit small for that wall, so. And it wasn't that much more money to just get a larger screen. And then, you know, rather than the cost of taking this one down and moving it, so that's what they're gonna do, and I know he ended up. I told him it was okay, then he went back and talked to David and and Lonnie had answered me back, so they're gonna get it done next week. So we'll have that space set up again too, and I I don't, I think what we talked about is potentially. Basically mimicking whatever's on that screen, on this screen, so the people in the audience have.
Yeah, something's.
Alright, um, next meeting is obviously next, next week, next Wednesday. Um, the sixth at six thirty. Um, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Subtle.
Second.
Favor.
Hi.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, everybody, online.
So my Friday, are we act, are we gonna be judging? Yes, I spoke, I actually brought that up to John.